...existing streetlights until new fixtures/poles are installed as part of the phased implementation of the underground project, obsolete fixtures that fail will be replaced by temporary fixtures selected by the Public Works Department because they're going to have a lot of different applications for that. Again, under luminaire, we deleted and the ETJ, or this is what we're recommending. The next page, page two, is if you go down to under lighting of city maintained streets, C, we're adding about a line about poles. New streetlight luminaires and poles may replace existing fixtures when necessary to accomplish illumination and foot candles in accordance with the lighting chart in this document. Appropriate luminaire and pole types will differ depending on the location where the streetlight is to be installed. The new statement is new and replacement poles made out of wood, concrete, or composite are permitted.
Can I ask you a question on that one?
Sure.
There's a, based on topography of where a house is and where the pole is, the house is a little bit higher than the other houses, and there's a streetlight that doesn't have a shield on it. It wouldn't, it would actually help in the light going up. Would that conversation help address that, or is that not an issue?
No, that's really what, they would put a shield on it.
So, so there's nothing in here that prevents us from putting shields on?
Oh, no, 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 no. That'll be at the discretion of, Larry can come up and he can talk about it. We have our electric superintendent here.
Mayor Alderman, yes, we would put a shield on the light, the luminaries that we put in, they, we have approved shielding that will be installed on that if necessary to avoid trespass into someone's house. And we have done that in some places, and it's been successful. And I do stock them in our inventory.
So if a resident wanted to, they would contact the manager to contact you to see if it's applicable for that location?
Yes, we would do that.
All right.
Okay, page three, under what we're proposing for your consideration tonight is that we are eliminating the autobahn lights around town, except I think in highway commercial. But the streetlights will be Southport special luminaries on concrete poles in the other residential areas. We already had it going up Howe and in the, in town, and so now we're making that the standard for town, or proposing to make that the standard for town. Then page four, just at the end of page four, under B waterfront downtown areas, including Howe Street up to Robert Rourke. It did say up to 14th Street, but we're saying, asking to change it to up to Robert Rourke for the luminary special. Well, that's the gateway.
Do we have control over that area? Like, can we make, do we have control over that area to make that recommendation, or do we have to go to the county now to do that?
So our electric utility extends beyond the city limits, and we do maintain and control those areas because we're the electrical supplier. If it's, we do have some instances where we extend all the way up to 11 to about Walmart and in various areas there, Robert Rourke, Jabbertown Road. So yeah, we do maintain all those.
And then lastly, we are proposing to eliminate the American Revolution LED series with the glass because it's less dark skies because it glows. Is that, that would be correct, Larry? It's dark skies, but it, because it gives off.
Right, so for two reasons really. One is the, that particular light, because it has glass on it, it diffuses and it does reflect into areas instead of just projecting down for dark sky. And secondly, trying to be fiscally accountable, we have to stock all these lights because they're a specific color temperature, 2700 Kelvin, which really looks like an incandescent lamp to everybody. And we buy them, and some of them are specially made for us. So we would like to, you know, keep our inventory and the types of lights that we use in the city to a few.
And that, that is for your consideration. Those are just the changes, and then Lo has some more information.
Yeah, a couple of things. If the terms that Larry was using, just to be sure, autobahn lights are exactly what you think they might be. Think about the speed limits on the autobahn in Germany. Those are the ones that are literally highway illumination lights, and we're not going to get any more of those. Is that correct? We're not going to, we're not adding them in anywhere.
So we're not installing them as new installations, but they do exist in the city, and we replace them as needed. And outside the city limits, in the former ETJ in our system, they're still in that area. And in some cases, that's our choice to replace the sodium, high pressure sodiums, and halogens and every other lamp that's been banned in the United States. All we have are LEDs. And again, those are the correct temperature. And on the wooden poles with the arms close to the pole, they don't trespass into residence areas, so we don't get complaints on it. When we put them in the residential area on the west side, we had them on a higher pole, and they trespassed excessively into residence areas. So yes, we're not going to use them as new installations, and that's why we'll put the concrete poles and the decor lights, luminaires in. And we do have, again, to answer the mayor's question, we do have manufactured shields that go with those fixtures specifically that attach, and they won't come off in a hurricane condition or anything like that. So that's what we're using.
And the other two types in use, the luminaries, are the ones that look like a bell shape. And then there's the acorn shapes. What do we call those?
We call those acorns. And yes, and then we have the, what are called TC-10s. They look like a carriage lamp, but they have no glass in them.
Yep.
And they don't, they just project down.
Okay. Among other things, we, we have long meetings, this ad hoc committee, and we've had many meetings over many aspects of this. But Alderman Masteller asked an interesting question during our meeting last week, which was food trucks. Who supplies their electricity? Do they bring their own generators, or, you know, what's going on? It turns out that they're plugging into us. By that I mean the city. So the city is paying for their electricity. And so we are now going to be looking for a way to eliminate that and find, you know, it's going to probably go to Elena and the...
I'm sorry. When you say they're plugging into the city, if somebody's going to some, a business here, they're plugging into the business, aren't they?
She's talking about when we do events and different things like that.
A Fourth of July thing?
Or different things.
I don't know, there's an awful world of generators out there, but I guess some of them might...
So, but it's something to consider, that's what Lo was saying.
Right. So the rate, this, we're asking that the rate committee meet again and think about this, because we really should increase our rates since we're providing their electricity.
So yes, in a business that they would have, they would be metered, and it's not a problem for us. I think what we're talking about are special events, and when we supply plug-in areas, we supply 50 amp circuits for some of these folks, like in the Fourth of July down South Howe Street. And I do believe that tourism or Elena, I think that they have some methodology to charge those folks for whatever usage they have for water and, and the electric, but I'm not really familiar with it, other than we make sure that they have the outlets that are required by the, by the event.
I'm not sure how many other places do that, so the easy way for the vendors is to say, "I'm not coming," but we can talk about that some other day.
Are we looking for a vote on the streetlight policy? What's our, what are we doing right now?
Uh huh. I would like to make a motion to accept these, the proposed changes for the lighting policy, streetlight policy.
There's a motion and a second. Is there any further conversation? Not hearing any. All in favor, please say aye. Is there any opposed? It passes unanimously. Thank you. Robert, are you still there, sir?
Yes.
Okay. The next agenda item is the public comment policy. The juror, sir?
Here on the mic.
Okay, can you hear me?
We can.
Excellent. I just wanted to bring this, after last month's meeting, I asked NOAA to go back and see if we already had a public comment policy in place. We do not, and so I thought that it would be appropriate that we do. NOAA has put together what I thought was a very good example of a public comment policy that I would like us not necessarily to vote on tonight, but to certainly open up for discussion. There are things in there, you'll see things like a time limit, which I did leave blank so that we could have that conversation at the table tonight or in the future. So that's, that's basically where we are. I don't know if y'all had a chance to review it, but NOAA did create the document that we have there, and I think it will help in guiding how we handle public comment moving forward.
So is there, is there comment of Alderman Carroll on this topic? Robert, as you know, you and I have talked about this multiple times, and I'm much in favor of this. The only thing that I would think we might want to amend as we go forward on this, you have a time limit on speaking, which I'm, I'm good with. Should we put the same time limit on the reading of letters? The title, let's assume...
Yes, it already includes it.
So whatever the minute is, if it's three minutes, when the clerk gets to three minutes, they stop, and that's the end of the conversation. Okay. We've had some that go on for, seems like hours, but it's not. So Robert, do you want us to digest this and come back in November, put this on the agenda for November 3rd, or how do, how we, what was your thought?
Yes, sir, I think that's a good idea.
Do you want to make that motion, sir?
I'll make a motion that we push this to the November 3rd meeting, giving us, giving us time to digest it, and at that time hopefully adopt it.
The motion and a second. Is there any further conversation? Not hearing any. All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? It's unanimous. Thank you, thank you, Alderman Carroll. All right, the committee reports, there's one here, they, they're all in your package, but there's one that's highlighted here, is the ABC report. Frank, do you have something?
Another solid month at the ABC store actually increases across beverage, everything. So the store's still doing very well.
All right, thank you very much. Manager report?
Yes, just two items to highlight. So as has been said this evening, we have a rescheduled joint Alderman slash with the HPC this coming Wednesday, the 15th at 11 o'clock here in the community building to go over the Southport Historic District and Design Standards. So that'll be this coming Wednesday here in the community building. Then I wanted to highlight that this week is National Fire Prevention Week. Southport Fire Department has been involved in over 20 programs already this week promoting fire and life safety and prevention programs that is focused for preschoolers, daycare, schools, and senior citizens. The themes of this year's programs are fire, or is charging to fire safety with an emphasis on not overly charging lithium and ion batteries and unplugging chargers when you're not at home. Any questions about Fire Prevention Week or fire safety in general can be directed to the Southport Fire Department, and we want to encourage all of our residents to be safe and prevent unnecessary fires and hazards. So we're happy to have Fire Prevention Week this week. Thank you.
Mayor's, mayor's comments are next. The only thing I have to say is that in the healing process, one of the things that is great, one of the many things that's great about the town, I don't know if there's a business that's out there that hasn't had some kind of fundraiser to raise money for both the victims that were injured or the families of the deceased or the employees. There's another big event, I believe it's October 18th. It's pretty much an all-day event, like seven bands down in the Ot Basin area. It's a fundraiser for the entire day down there. So if you are around, I would suggest that you spend a little time down there. Okay, staff reports, they're in your book. Does anybody have something on their boards or committees that they want to highlight?
I do, just because a lot of people don't, don't seem to have clicked to the fact that Parks and Recreation is now on the third Tuesday, not the second Tuesday of the month, and at a different time. It is at 5:30 instead of 6:00. Same place, though.
Any other cemetery, anything like that? Okay, thank you very much. Board comments. Alderman Masteller? Alderman Davis?
Remember the Wooden Boat Show is November the 1st, Saturday, a very well-attended event, and if you go, you're going to go every year.
Alderman Kelly?
That is a big weekend for Southport. That is also the Steed Bonnet Regatta, and I believe it is also going to be the King, US Open King Mackerel Tournament that weekend, as well as the BFL Southport Cougars Football Team's championship is that weekend.
Alderman Spencer? Alderman Lay?
Sorry.
All right, I would entertain a motion to go into closed session in pursuant of North Carolina General Statute 143-318 dot 113 to consult with an attorney employed or retained by the public body in order to preserve attorney-client privilege between the attorney and the public body. Sub move?
Second.
The motion and a second. Is there any conversation? Not hearing any. All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? No, we're in closed session. Thank you, ladies.
I would entertain a motion to come out of closed session.
Some move?
Has a motion and a second, is there any conversation on it? Not hearing any, all in favor, please say aye. Any oppose? It's announced we're out of public hearing, we're back into open session. And I have one amendment to the upcoming events this weekend, or the November 1st weekend. I just want to read it to the record. And that is the Jack Helberg Foundation will be holding a fundraiser at the Morningstar Marina. That's on the first, right sir? On the first. It'll consist of a boat pull for the adults and the kids. They also have food vendors there. They are the ones who collect the money amongst other things, put all the safety things all over there. Oak Island, our docks, and every place else. They're big into water safety type issues. So I just want to put that on the record. I will now entertain a motion to adjourn. Has a motion and a second, any conversation? Not hearing any, all in favor, please say aye. Any oppose, we stand adjourned. Thank you everybody.